All righty. Good morning, Commissioners, and over to Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and welcome to the Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the formal honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services is meeting as regular session, January 21st, 2025. Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Phi?
Present.
Vice Chair Treese?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Thank you, Clerk Moss. The next item on our agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the board on any topic you would like for up to two minutes an individual. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We have two signed up in the room, Jill Brandt and Kevin Pate, so please come forward.
Go ahead, Ms. Brandt.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Brandt. I've been a Washington County resident for nearly seven years. I used to say six and a half years, but we've been doing this for four months now, so now it's closer to seven. Today is January 21st. Today, the Washington County Election Office will be debriefing the Washington County Board of Commissioners on the November 2024 general election. Prior to the November election, the election office update was held during the regular board meeting. This time, it's being held during a work session which we, the community, may attend but during which we are not allowed to speak or to participate. This is not the work session we have been requesting. For four months now, concerned residents of Washington County have been requesting a work session with you, a request which thus far has been ignored. The data and information we have brought to you overwhelmingly demonstrates fundamental problems with Washington County elections that need to be addressed, yet it bewilderingly continues to fall on deaf ears. We seek to engage in a dialogue and investigate ways we can work together to truly ensure accurate and trustworthy elections. As citizens yourselves, are you not concerned about the legitimacy of your own votes? As you aspire to run in future elections, don't you want to know that the money and effort you place in your candidacy functions within a trustworthy election system? As it is, we anticipate yet another debrief that paints a rosy, feel-good picture of our elections, one that looks good on paper but doesn't dare dig too deep because the truth is, while the county elections' officials are on the front lines, they are not truly in charge of the elections. They execute the election process but are not in control of external factors affecting it. They are paid to do their best to carry out a process that is flawed through no fault of their own. Washington County leadership can take a stand to rectify this issue on behalf of the civil rights of its citizens through the application of Home Rule. Thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I am Kevin Pate, a resident of Washington County for 30 years. Safe and secure. Whenever the integrity of our elections is questioned, local, state, and federal agencies typically respond by saying that our elections are safe and secure. But what does that really mean? On October 1st, in advance of the 2024 general election, the Washington County Elections Director reported here that security primarily refers to hardening of the elections, infrastructure, enhanced drop boxes, ongoing collaboration with local and federal law enforcement agencies, and private security. He said, "As election administrators, we're always thinking about the safety and security of the process and the people, that is voters, candidates, and election workers. So the bureaucratic goal is to ensure that the existing process runs smoothly and no person is harmed." While this sounds good on the surface, this depiction of "safe and secure" completely misses the mark regarding election integrity. After extensive research and study, we citizens have found that the existing process, as designed, is deeply flawed and extremely vulnerable to fraud and to attacks, both internal and external. Insecurity has been built into the system over time, so no matter how smoothly it runs and how safe everyone is, the results are completely untrustworthy. The bottom line is our ballots and votes are not safe and secure. That is the issue. Voters have become disillusioned and disenfranchised, and the voting issues are getting worse with every election. We will persist in our endeavor to bring integrity back to our elections, and would like to work together with you to do so. Thank you.
Is there any member on Zoom that we should provide public comment for up to two minutes on any currently topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seen any hands. Chair Harrington?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of six items: one set of minutes, one item from Clean Water Services, one item from Finance, one item from Human Resources, one item from Land Use and Transportation, and one item from the County Auditor's Office. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding today's consent agenda?
Move to accept.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting today's consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to Boards and Commissions. Today, we have the opportunity to appoint two members to the Planning Commission, Nina Carlson for a four-year term expiring January 31 of 2029. She resides in District 3. And James Just for the remainder of a four-year term expiring January 31 of 2028 for District 4. What are the wishes of the Commission?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to presentations, and I'd like to invite the County Auditor and anyone from her staff related to this for a presentation on the Auditor's Program Audit on the county's Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, also referred to as MISTIP.
Good morning, members of the Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Christine Adams-Wanberg, and I am the County Auditor. I am here to present on the Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program Audit, which was publicly released on December 20th. Yes, right before Christmas. This report is available on our website, but it was also included in the packet that was provided to the Board. So I want to give you a little bit of a preview of coming attractions in terms of what this presentation will be. We're going to describe the objectives of the audit, the purpose, the scope. We're going to describe the risks for MISTIP. We are going to describe the audit findings and recommendations, also provide management with an opportunity to respond to the recommendations, and then answer any questions that you may have. So, a little bit about why this particular audit was chosen. This particular audit was chosen because -- oh, thank you. This audit was chosen because while I was doing canvassing for office, this was a topic that came up. People were very interested in transportation. There were also many people who were interested who were bike lovers, who were interested in bike facilities. We did have some members of different elected jurisdictions and everything that had expressed an interest in this topic. We also found that MISTIP had the largest gross operating expenditure budget for FY22-23, and that the Auditor's Office, when we did our risk assessment, this was one of the highest risks that we ranked. I also want to just put out there that obviously, this is a really cool program. This is one of the most interesting programs, I think, that the county has. I am very grateful, as a resident of Washington County, that we have this program. Many other counties do not, so I'm really excited that we were able to do a deep dive on this. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to my senior management auditor, Fiona.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, I am Fiona Howell-Earle, Senior Management Auditor in the County Auditor's Office. The scope of this audit was to do a review of the history of the Main Streets Transportation Improvement Program, the MISTIP, to identify risks to this program. We paid particular attention to the process to allocate funding to the most recent MISTIP cycle, known as MISTIP 3F, which received the Board's acceptance during our audit in June 2024. We looked back to the original three ballot levies to fund the MISTIP, but we paid more attention to the funding results for the two previous MISTIP cycles, 3D and 3E, than to the earlier funding cycles. We also reviewed the MISTIP Bonding Cost Sharing Subprogram, the BCS, which led to our finding number six. This order ended up with two objectives or goals of the audit. The first was to identify the perceptions of the major risks for the Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program in accomplishing its objectives. Our second objective was to review the links between the MISTIP's risks and issues, and to assess whether the major risks can be viewed as audit findings and potentially be mitigated. Today, I'm going to describe these two objectives and the separate parts of our audit report that came from each objective in more detail. We went into this audit with the objective of identifying the major risks for the MISTIP in accomplishing its objectives. We slightly amended our first objective to be to identify the perceptions of the major risks for the MISTIP in accomplishing its objectives. The identification of risk can be subjective because it involves looking at possible future events and/or the future adverse impacts of events. Therefore, we decided to draw on the perceptions of various stakeholders in the MISTIP to confirm the risks we identified through interviews and our research. We gathered these perceptions by conducting an anonymous survey. The definition of risk given here comes from the glossary of the Federal Internal Control Standards of 2014. This is the definition of risk we used for this audit. The first audit objective meant that this order is also a risk assessment of the MISTIP. Sorry, just at the start, we confirmed the MISTIP's objectives are to improve safety and traffic flow or to relieve congestion through its transportation construction projects. In addition, the MISTIP-funded projects have to be on a major road used by many travelers, for which the Department of Land Use and Transportation has a map, and the projects must address the needs for all travelers, including bicyclists and pedestrians as well as drivers. So, to identify the MISTIP risks, we interviewed present and previous members of the Washington County Coordinating Committee. This included two Washington County Commissioners and eight of the 13 city mayors, whose jurisdictions are within Washington County. We also interviewed managers and staff from the Department of Land Use and Transportation, the County Administrative Office, and the Finance Department. We reviewed the county's charter, code, and policies, and the MISTIP's administrative procedures. We reviewed other government audits, articles, and consultants' reports about transportation construction risk. For the survey, we asked the stakeholders, for each of 14 risks, how likely they thought it was the risk would occur, and the impact on the MISTIP if that risk did occur. The people we surveyed last year were the Washington County Commissioners, the members of the Washington County Coordinating Committee, also known as the WCCC, the WCCC Technical Advisory Committee, senior management in the Department of Land Use and Transportation, and the chairpersons of the county's community participation organizations. We also asked for their input for any risks not in our survey. This order identified 17 risks for the Main Streets Transportation Improvement Program, which we are showing by their risk type. The first risk type is the financial and economic risk. There's risk of inflation or rising costs on MISTIP projects. You will hear more about inflation when we talk about our findings. Debt risk arises when the county borrows money to build some MISTIP projects faster. Repaying that debt and the interest for some projects may reduce the money available to build other MISTIP projects. Insufficient county funding, combined with a need or desire for funding from local, state, or federal governments, is another financial or economic risk. The MISTIP is funded by a share of Washington County's property tax. Sometimes, the county seeks additional funding from other sources when current sources are not enough to cover projects, and that seems to be increasing. Project time delays is the risk of MISTIP projects being completed later than planned. The next risk type is the socio-political one. These are given here for the record, and I'm not going to read them all to you. Washington County has no plans to reduce or discontinue support for the MISTIP, but this still meets the definition of a risk to this program because the county could decide to do this in the future. The little symbol at the end of the Equity Project Selection Risk, this squiggle, means that we did not include this and two other risks to be described later in our survey of risks. We, and then the CAO, made valiant attempts to describe the equity of project selection risk in a short enough way to fit into a survey, but it was too complex. Long surveys and long survey questions tend to be ignored, so we left this risk out of our survey. Thanks. The next risk type is the management risk arising from management's decisions. I apologize that we inadvertently omitted Capital Improvement Planning, CIP, changes from this slide. The county has started a new multi-year program to plan for capital expenditure, including the MISTIP projects. Major changes to a program always bring risk. However, we considered this risk too complex to include in our survey of stakeholder perceptions. Once again, even if the Washington County Coordinating Committee's role with MISTIP is not changed, this still meets the definition of a risk to this program because it could change in the future. The design risk of the county requiring multiple designs for each MISTIP project is connected to our audit finding number seven. The nonavailability and limited availability of county and contract personnel is linked to national demographic changes we saw when we did our succession planning audit. The next risk type is the legal risk, and we've also listed other risks on this slide. These are here for the record, and I'm not going to read them all to you. I'll just say that the severe weather risk refers to possible unsafe working conditions due to extreme heat or wildfire smoke, for instance. It also refers to the physical properties of asphalt, which has to go down on the ground before ambient ground temperature drops too low. The risk of earthquake was considered to belong to the county's disaster recovery plan. Therefore, we did not include it in our risk survey to gather perceptions of the MISTIP risks. Regarding the supply chain risk, which leads to the nonavailability of building materials needed for transportation construction, it can take the county months to obtain certain materials for the MISTIP projects. This slide shows the answer options in our risk survey. We also provided space for responders to provide text answers. For each of the 14 risks, we asked the stakeholders how likely they thought it was the risk would occur, and the impact on the MISTIP if that risk did occur. We asked the stakeholders to select from text answers according to their perception of the risk likelihood and possible impact. Then we assigned numbers to these text answers to analyze the survey responses. This slide shows Figure 3 from our report, a table of average MISTIP risk rankings. We took the average of the responses to each question of how likely they thought it was the risk would occur, and the impact on the MISTIP if that risk did occur. We calculated the total risk ranking for each risk by multiplying the average likelihood number by the average impact number. Please don't get stuck on the number. Perfecting a numerical risk score is less important than understanding which risk is relatively more important to provide a prioritized risk list. We had a response rate to our MISTIP risk survey of 65%, which is a really good response rate to a survey. This slide shows Figure 4 from our report, heat map of average stakeholder perceptions of MISTIP risks. It is easier to see in the audit report. The risks that should be priorities for management's attention are closest to the top right corner, the red corner, where the most extreme impact meets the highest likelihood of a risk occurring. And you can see up there, that's Risk R1, inflation and rising costs, up in the top right corner. Risk R4, that Washington County reduces or discontinues support for the MISTIP, was perceived as may or may not be likely, but would have an extremely significant impact if it does occur. It's the risk dot in the top center of this heat map. We're going to shift now from our risk assessment to the second objective of our audit and the audit findings. Our second audit objective was to review the links between the MISTIP's risks and issues, and to assess whether the major risks can be viewed as audit findings and potentially be mitigated. Under government auditing standards, an audit finding has to have a condition which does not match the relevant criteria, so that what is, is not as it should be. An audit finding also has a cause for that condition, and an unwelcome effect resulting from the condition. This leads us to make a recommendation to improve the condition and correct the cause. Sometimes, findings are positive because the difference between the condition and the criteria has a positive effect. During our early audit research into the MISTIP, we found some issues that we wanted to determine if they were indeed audit findings. The MISTIP audit had seven findings. The audit's first finding is that the Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program is not authorized and defined in the county code, and it lacks official policies. The MISTIP is not included in county charter, despite its significance to the county and size of budget. The MISTIP 3 Fund has $301 million of modified expenditure budget in the current fiscal year. The Board, there is also not any Board adopted policy to set out the direction of the MISTIP. The Board approved updated administrative procedures for the MISTIP in June of 2024, for the first time since 2003. However, procedures are not policy. I want to distinguish that policies are really those high-level standards or direction the county leadership gives compared to procedures which are specific ways of doing things. Because of this situation, there's no protection of the MISTIP's existence, and no provision for its levels of funding. Codification would provide the MISTIP with authority, structure, and clarity. The audit's second finding was about the MISTIP's approach to equity and equality in recommending projects for MISTIP funding. Equity is not the same thing as equality. The first three MISTIP ballot levies were for specific lists of projects which were not evenly spread across the county. Over time, the county's practice has moved to allocating an equal amount of funding to each commissioner district to support MISTIP projects. This practice is based on direction from the Board, not on written policy. By the MISTIP 3E cycle, the Board allocated about 25% of the money to each commissioner district. For the MISTIP 3F funding cycle, the Board approved LUT's plan to comply with the 2020 equity resolution. The department went to great lengths to include feedback from historically excluded community members to develop equity metrics that were used, among other metrics, to evaluate projects for the MISTIP 3F. The challenge is that there are a couple of different layers in considering what projects to recommend to the Board for funding. One consideration is the direction from the Board for geographic equality. The other is based on an expressed philosophy of equity in an official county resolution. We found it unclear whether one should or should not take precedence over the other, or how those aspects or others for project evaluation should work together. To decrease confusion, we recommend clarifying the elements and formally adopting how they should be applied. The audit's third finding was about the county not complying with its administrative policy number 404, the budget policy, when it reduced the general fund transfer to the MISTIP 3 Fund for the fiscal year 2023 to '24 and fiscal year 2024 to '25 budgets. According to the county's budget policy, the MISTIP is not considered a general fund program and should not be included in calculating the general fund's balance. However, for two consecutive years, the county cut the base general fund transfer to the MISTIP 3 Fund as if it were a general fund program. We acknowledge that the Board of County Commissioners publicly disclosed this exception to budget policy number 404, explaining it was done to address the county's financial challenges of increasing costs and declining revenues. However, the general fund's expected revenues are forecast to continue to fall short of its expected expenditures for at least the next five fiscal years. And for the county to continue making an exception to its administrative policy undermines the purpose of having a policy and the effectiveness of these internal controls. The audit's fourth finding was about the MISTIP's noncompliance with the fund contingency requirements before 2024, and the changes made then by the county to the contingency requirements. Although the MISTIP began to comply with the revisions made to its administrative procedures in 2024 before the end of this audit, we are still required to report earlier noncompliance by government auditing standards. In addition, our recommendation is aimed at the county's new contingency requirements in administrative policy number 405 before these become a problem for the MISTIP. The Finance Department plans to move some of the contingency budgets in fiscal year 2025 to '26 into reserves for future expenditures, which is a type of contingency budget or fund that cannot be accessed until the following fiscal year. That will not help the MISTIP if an unforeseen event arises that would be helped by prompt access to that contingency money. The audit's fifth finding was about the past practices which did not build enough contingency and inflation assumptions into cost estimates for MISTIP projects. Before the MISTIP 3F cycle, LUT did not add inflation to the MISTIP project cost estimates for each year of the project's life. Not adding inflation for every year of the expected life of the project can lead to an underestimate of the costs. The underestimate of the MISTIP 3D and 3E costs had risen to $90 million by September of 2023. Past MISTIP project contingency assumptions were not consistent, low enough to cover the level of cost increases in the past several years. The Department of Land Use and Transportation did develop a more robust cost estimating process for the MISTIP 3F projects. The audit's sixth finding was about the county's funding mechanisms in 2015 to 2016 to pay for the MISTIP bonding cost sharing in two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen to pay for the MISTIP Bonding Cost Sharing Subprogramme. This was a case of good intentions having an unintended consequence. Projects in four high-growth areas had an advantage against inflation under the MISTIP Bonding Cost Sharing Subprogramme. This funding advantage was not available to other MISTIP projects. The four major residential growth areas are North Bethany, Bonny Slope West, in unincorporated Washington County, South Hillsborough, in the city of Hillsborough, South Cooper Mountain, in the city of Beaverton, and River Terrace, in the city of Tygird. The county uses a tax revenue from increased assessed valuation countywide to pay for these BCS projects. This left the property tax revenue available for MISTIP projects in other areas of the county flat at thirty four point six million per year. This occurred as inflation was taking off. And this next slide demonstrates the impact of this special funding mechanism. This slide shows figure seven from our report. It might be a bit difficult to read in the slide, but it shows how the general fund transfer to the MISTIP for non-bonding cost-sharing projects remained flat, while construction costs rose dramatically. The grey columns represent the millions of dollars transfers from the general fund to the MISTIP III Fund from two thousand and three through two thousand and twenty two. The yellow columns represent the amounts transferred from the general fund to debt service on behalf of the MISTIP Bonding Cost Sharing Projects. The blue line is the Mortonsen Construction Cost Index for the Portland area, which the Department of Land Use and Transportation uses to track inflation on its capital construction projects. The audit's seventh finding was about the county's two thousand and seventeen bike facilities policy. The two thousand and seventeen policy incorporates the Washington County Bicycle Facilities Design Toolkit that was accepted by the board in December of two thousand and twelve. However, its separated bicycle tracks have not yet been incorporated into Washington County Road Design Standard. The two thousand and seventeen policy requires at least two alternative designs with separated or protected bicycle lanes and paths. In practice, what happens is that LUT is producing at least three designs for every county-funded capital road improvement project to which this policy applies. The two thousand and seventeen policy also gives the board the authority to pick which design land use and transportation should follow. However, the policy for having the board approve the design conflicts with the county code over who has design approval authority for roads. Washington County Code for Road Design and Construction Standards require that plans submitted to LUT also be approved by that department. The two thousand and seventeen policy requirement for board approval increases the time needed to get design approval. Staff estimate that getting a board decision on a design adds an average of six months to a project's timeline. It also adds tens of thousands of dollars to a capital road construction project. The audit presents nine recommendations. For finding one, the audit recommends that the county should add the MISTIP to county code, specifically that the county administrator through the Department of Land Use and Transportation should draft county code that authorises and defines the purpose and governance of the MISTIP. The Board of Commissioners should review the proposed code for adoption. The second recommendation for finding one is for the county administrator to draft and adopt administrative policies that provide direction and the philosophy for how the MISTIP should manage and fund its work. I'd like to note that a guide is not the same thing as a policy, and a guide does not have the same internal control strength as a policy, even if that guide is adopted by the board resolution. For finding two, the audit recommends that the county administrator should include in the proposed administrative policy in recommendation one dash two, direction on how the MISTIP will address the philosophy of the equity resolution and reconcile it with the board's desire for equality of funding by commissioner district. For finding three, the audit recommends that the county should comply with budget policy number four oh four. If this policy direction is out of alignment with the county's budget philosophy, the county administrator should propose the revised policy. For finding four, the county administrator through the chief financial officer should revoke the plan to have the MISTIP III Fund put some of its contingency into a reserve for future expenditures budget and revise the administrative policy number four oh five as necessary with board approval. The reserve for future expenditures type of contingency budget or fund cannot be accessed until the following fiscal year. That makes it a little less useful to the MISTIP if it has an unforeseen event that would be helped by prompt access to such contingency funds. For finding five, the audit recommends that the county administrator through the Department of Land Use and Transportation should continue to improve the accuracy of the cost forecasting for the MISTIP projects. These cost estimates should include the cumulative impact of inflation for each year of the expected project pipeline between approval and the completion of construction. I mean, almost all the MISTIP projects are multi-year projects. For finding six, the audit recommends that the county administrator through the Department of Land Use and Transportation and the Finance Department should define in an administrative policy how the county will be fair and equitable between the MISTIP projects allocated money from the two funding models of pay-as-you-go and debt funding. The audit's last two recommendations are for finding seven. The audit recommends that the county administrator through the Department of Land Use and Transportation should update the county's road design standards to incorporate the desire for separated bicycle facilities and propose these updates to the board for adoption. The updated road design standards should include a process to select the best type of the various bicycle facilities to be incorporated into the single required design for road types to which these facilities apply. All exceptions for bicycle design should be documented and authorised by the county engineer. Also for finding seven, the audit recommends that the county administrator through the Director of Land Use and Transportation should revoke the two thousand and seventeen bicycle facilities for county-funded capital improvement policy with board approval if necessary to comply with the delegation of authority to the Department of Land Use and Transportation already in county code for the approval of road plans. Before we hand this presentation over to the C A O, we also note that in today's presentation, the C A O partially agrees with our recommendation one dash two, sorry, seven dash two, to revoke the two thousand and seventeen bicycle facilities policy. But in the formal management response provided and included in our audit report, management stated that they agreed with this recommendation. Now I'm handing over to the county administrator for management's response to our audit.
So Commissioners, before I turn it over to Ms Angie to provide the management response, do any of you have any questions of the auditor on the actual report? No? Okay, so Ms Angie will be presenting, if you would allow her. Thank you. Make it away, Ms Angie.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners and audit staff. I want to appreciate the work our audit staff and our elected auditor put into this audit. I also want to recognise our Land Use and Transportation Department, some of the members are in the audience, for responding to the audit office request on top of their significant work that they are trying to deliver for our community day to day. I also want to list a couple of the, highlight a couple of the words that really stuck with me or resonated with me is risk. And the intention of this audit was to look at risk of MISTIP. Inflation, the never-ending, what frankly feels like never-ending transportation needs, not just in Washington County, but our state and country are real. And that deferred investment that has occurred. With that, also recognising really the historic investment that this county has made in transportation has positioned us in a very different state, current state, not state of Oregon, but current state, than we find some of our other fellow jurisdictions across the United States. And so I want to just commend this board and also future board or former boards for that investment. As the board knows, maybe not members of the public, this is the time of year that I feel I live sleep and eat budgets. And I would draw attention to anyone from the public interested in the current state and just challenges that we face with our budget. Our revenues are not meeting expenditures. Your board has had significant conversations since October. So for members of our public, please refer to our roundtable packets which are posted online starting in October of two thousand and twenty four. Once a month, this board has had conversations of just really the challenges to balance, as I think of it, just our holistic systems of service that we deliver here in Washington County, not just MISTIP. So this is not, this conversation or our budget is not just within a vacuum. So for my response, what's included in the packet, I will just focus on the response. There are several slides relative to MISTIP background. That is just for members of the public wanting to have more information regarding the programme. I will note some of this information is also included in the auditor's report, but not spending time to focus today on that. So with this management response, as our auditor had reported, management does agree with some of the responses, partially agrees, and then with a few of the findings does not agree. Okay, this is the slide I was hoping for. So this is just a summary slide breaking out into those categories of agree, partially agree and do not agree. So I will now walk through each of those responses. So finding one, MISTIP is not authorised and defined in county code and lacks official policies. I will just go to the management comments because our auditor had really spoke to each of the findings. So management comments are, MISTIP does have policies and adopted programme procedures in place, but they are not located in a single document. The evolution of MISTIP over time is a strength, and I did speak to that in my opening comments, because the investment has created the situation that we see our transportation system here in Washington County. Codification limits evolution over time. It limits the ability to leverage or be opportunistic. We have seen over the past few years, specifically through the time of Covid, really unprecedented federal investment. We could see that in the future. So by having prescriptive code, that can limit opportunities. It can also limit specific needs that our community may have. Let's say community is increasing significant development, maybe industrial, commercial or housing, that we would need to make an immediate shift in priorities of projects. Management does recommend developing a holistic MISTIP programme guide to be adopted by the board via resolution. This is very typical to how your board adopts other programme guides throughout the county. This programme would include background and overview, including recently amended administrative procedures and prior programme guidance from the board. The reason for that prior programme guidance is to really recognise the history and that we are standing, this programme stands on the history of the evolution here in Washington County. Finding two, and this is related to equity and equality. Equity considerations implemented in three F, that is your board's most recent planning process, were considered in the project selection. This was the first time that we had holistic conversations on equity beyond just geographical equity or equality. So our audit staff did talk about that a bit, but I just want to underscore that point. Neither factor was given explicit precedent. Both are considerations in project selection and help shape the final three F funding recommendation and decision. So for project selection, we don't just look at a map and say, here's where the project should be included. There is staff-to-staff relationship with cities, elected to, elected input through W C C C, and then of course your board's input. And I want to underscore, there's also community input through the process. So there's several layers that shape the recommendations. Management does recommend incorporating this process into, into guidance in the MISTIP programme guide that I referenced in the prior finding. Finding three, the county did not comply with its budget policy. Management response is, we do not agree with this. Per board adopted policy four oh four, lays out that annual transfers from the general fund to MISTIP should be adjusted based on assessed values. Your board had clearly adopted this exception in your past two fiscal years, R and O. This conversation also was publicly disclosed, both within work sessions, budget committee meetings and also board meetings. So we feel this is a bit of mischaracterisation. And as your board is aware, we are comprehensively updating all of our financial policies that will include also the budget policy. I want to express appreciation to our elected auditor for, I believe that was your first audit, looking at our fiscal policies and really being a partner in that work in helping us evolve the practice to best practice in financial management here at Washington County. Finding four, MISTIP did not comply with past contingency requirements. New requirements will hinder MISTIP's access to its reserve. Guidance from the prior county administrator and CFO was to not budget a specific reserve or contingency category, but carry funds in a fund balance to maximise flexibility. Per the board's adopted four oh five policy, budget reserve should be included in two categories, contingency, which can be accessed in the current year, and reserve for future expenditure cannot. This guidance was included in the MISTIP administrative procedures. For the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, MISTIP budget includes a hundred and eighty million in contingency and would potentially include the hundred and fifty in bond sale revenues. Your board had authorised staff to explore the bonds. We have not, your board has not actually authorised the sale that will be coming to your board. I also want to note, the county administrator can bring to your board at any point in time a budget supplemental. So we do have two budget supplementals per calendar year. Those are scheduled. But if needed, if we would need an emergency budget supplemental for any reason, whether it's MISTIP or it would be another, I'll call it the emergency use of funds, that action can occur. Finding five, past MISTIP projects lacked sufficient contingency and inflation assumptions. Management comments include, with each MISTIP funding cycle, staff has continued to improve project cost estimates and reasonable cost escalation assumptions and contingency. I want to commend the I want to commend the work that LUT has done to really strengthen its project estimating. And wow, we have learned a lot through COVID and unprecedented escalation. So whoa, that was a risk we, I don't think anyone ever had assumed. So as a learning organization, we were committed and I feel that staff very adeptly had used that learning, that point in time that was unprecedented, to really fast forward as we plan into three, three F. Finding six, not all misstep projects are protected equally from inflation. We partially, staff partially agrees with this. Management comments include, to the extent there was unintended geographic or programmatic imbalance between misstep bonded, debt funded, and misstep three D and three pay as you go projects, the board has addressed this by authorizing bonding to pay for the cost escalation impacts on the pay as you go projects. So for members of the community who are listening, the, what I'll call the backlog of projects from three D and three, three D and three E, we will be addressing that through the 150 million bonding, which the board has authorized staff to move forward with that. In the future, staff recommend any misstep bonding, debt financing be done only on a program wide basis to avoid any potential imbalance. And this will also be included in the guidance in the misstep program guide. Finding seven, 2017 bike facilities policy is not needed and costs time and money. Management comments, staff agree in principle, but are taking a different approach than what is recommended by the auditor. This includes updating the road standards and transportation system plan. The acronym for that is TSP to include more bicycle facility types, updating the TSP to also, to adopt bicycle facility designations and county managed arterials and collectors. This work is underway and your board is well aware that this work is underway. And upon board adoption of the above, staff will recommend repeal of this policy. It is not recommended we repeal the policy until we adopt the work as described.
Board members, do you have any questions about the management response for this misstep risk assessment audit?
I don't have any comments about.
So I'm asking for questions of management at this time?
No.
Okay, seeing none, as part of closing this topic, commissioners, do you have any comments that you wish to make before we close this topic and move on with our meeting? Go ahead, Commissioner Snyder.
I want to thank the county auditor and frankly, the county staff. I think this has been a topic that has been of significant interest and concern to many, many community members and community leaders throughout the region. I think, I really want to thank our staff for being receptive and open to receiving some fairly significant feedback and putting thoughtful time into evaluating those. County auditor, you and your team did a great job. I, these are tough, these are tough conversations and I feel like this is a good example of the process working from the auditor perspective and being able to, to raise significant things to have a serious conversation about and to give more thought to. And I think there's a lot of value in that. And sometimes things are tough. And I think this is, this is a situation where those important conversations have happened because of the thoughtful review that both your team did and then also county administrator, the staff team did as well. So I just want to thank everybody for, for that. And there's a lot to think about here.
Any other commissioners?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Go ahead, I can follow you.
Well, no, I thank you for this, this report as well, although I'm, I'm a little bit more conflicted with this report. When you talk about the risk, and that's how you defined the original purpose, we in our budget process have to balance the risk of good roads and a functional government. And when we prioritize or we put into code that thou shalt not touch this money, we put the operations of the government at risk because we know the pie is not big enough. So I didn't see that in your risk assessment. I saw the risk of inflation, the risk of earthquake, and basically those risks apply to virtually every program we have. So wasn't a real big fan of, of your risk assessment in there. If the slide presentation was up, it'd be slide nine and 10, but we don't need to go there. When we talk about equity and equality, I mean, every person sitting up here on this dais has been either a member of WCC at one point in time or worked directly with them. Okay? The process is very broad and includes every elected body in the county and a variety of other transportation groups. So when we talk about equity versus equality, that's been inherent in the conversation for actually a very long time. And to me, it's a balance. We need to make sure that we balance between the four districts and then within that district decision making, we do the equity part of it. So it's a process that I think we do a pretty darn good job at. And, and I guess my, my concern is if we're trying to say, well, we're not, we're not very good with equity. Well, I guess that's to me, as you've pointed out, a definitional thing, the contrast of equity and equality. I think quite frankly, history, historically and going into the future, we do a pretty good job of making sure we address those things. So, and then, and then the last thing will be contingencies. We have since 2007 had two significant economic impacts at least. And there is no possible way you can incorporate enough contingency of a what if scenario and have any money left over whatsoever. So to, what I read is to kind of chastise our LUT department or the WCC for not putting enough contingency in this. Who would have thunk we'd experience a 30% increase in construction costs during this period of time? We're addressing that. We have to bond to catch up on that, but I think what that says is that we are committed to the MSTIP program. We love the program. We're willing to put ourselves into 150 million dollars of debt to catch up and to show our commitment to this program. So again, to critique the program because they didn't have enough contingency is you got a great view in the rearview mirror. And so looking back, it's easy to say, well, we should have. Well, that's an everyday thing. We're always looking backwards and looking forward, trying to anticipate these things. But I also didn't think really honestly that that fell within your audit preview to critique something that's in the rearview mirror. I mean, we're going to make up for it. It's going to cost us 150 million dollars, but for you to say, we would, we should have, well, no. I mean, we, we have new government now and we hope that we can look out forward to see what all that looks like, but we don't know. So we're going to do the best job we can, and I think that's what we did here. So that's my comments. Thanks, Chair.
I'd like to respond to those comments.
We have a very full day. We had tried to arrange our next topic in work session, elections, to follow promptly. So this is not a forum for debate. So I think we really need to finish up with our comments and move on with the, the other posted agenda of the day.
I respect that and can meet with Commissioner Willie at a different point. I have several concerns with what you've stated, but we can meet at a different point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, auditor. Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Phi.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the great presentation to the both of you and Tanya as well. You know, I think I have a different take of how I digested your report. I think you were elected by the people of Washington County to do this exact work. And our responsibility is to sit down with our staff and say, tell me. And I think the staff put together a really well response in terms of, to your findings as well as your recommendations. And I think for, as I sit in on this side, I am in agreement of how the staff responded and the presentation our county administrator gave. I did, you know, I can have a conversation. I think the chair is right, we do have a full agenda. But the question I had that really stood out for me when I was reading your report in the, this section, I actually had to go back and read it again, was the bike facility policy that you called out. Of all the complimentary things to add to your report around MSTIP, you called out the, the bike policy, the bike facilities policy. And then in your narrative in the report, you called out specifically prior boards spending quite significant amount of money on one occasion in three different, in one of three projects, you said, to just quote specifically. So to me, that seemed like specifically targeted of that policy and, and sort of a preconceived notions or perceptions around that policy. So it didn't, it didn't go well with, it didn't go well with the report. When I was reading it, it just seemed like, I'm going to pick on this policy. While I agree, the staff sort of agreed with you and are actually doing a significant amount of work to update the TSP, TP, transportation plan, prove it, sorry, acronym, skipping this morning. But in a nutshell, the staff are in work, doing incredible work around updating the standards to sort of meet the goal you reached at the end. But I like to, I think for transparency and openness, it would be great if you had some kind of a different statement of why you picked that policy rather than disagreeing some of the projects that you called out in the report.
Commissioner Trese?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, our, to our auditor and to staff for the work that you've done. Thank you to the management for your response. And I also echo the thanks to our LUT department. You referred to the risks as perceived risks. And I would just like to point out that an overriding factor here is the risk that all of our government structures, the municipalities, the county, everybody has, is, is the limitation on our budget. So that's a perceived risk from my perspective that was not identified. And in, in dealing with a program that has shared opportunity inherent to the process is going to be a, a difficult road to, to move forward on. And I'd just like to, to pull that out and say, I believe that the county and the cities are doing their best to work toward the best usage of MSTIP while understanding what the budget constraints are to the county and to the individual municipalities. So again, thank you for your report.
Thank you. I'll wrap up comments from the board. I appreciate hearing from all of my colleagues. I particularly want to comment on the management report. Ms. Angie, I very much stand by the management response and all the different aspects. As Commissioner Willie pointed out, we do have to weigh all of our programs and all of the risks to the delivery of service across the county and ensure that we have a functional county government. So I think I want to applaud the elected auditor for taking on big subjects. They are, they are in fact big, but we're all learning a lot about how different people preserve, perceive different facts, different histories, and what we might do forward. So I thank management for your response because I think you've particularly put us on good footing with regard to where we stand with facts and what we're able to take on in the next year or two, which is a very challenging load as it stands. So we'll leave it from there. Thank you very much for spending your time on this audit, spending your time presenting the audit findings and the recommendation and giving us the opportunity for furthering our thinking as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. All right, we will move on with the next item on our agenda. As I mentioned, we've tried to construct today's timing so that interested members of our community can stay after this meeting for the election work session topic. After we finish with public comment, pending upon how long it will be, we may have to revisit that timing, but I will wait and see what the timing is for this meeting. This is our second public comment period of the day. This is an opportunity for members of our community to engage, or excuse me, to speak to the board for up to five minutes, an individual for a maximum of 30 minutes.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. So now as we have six people signed up and one wishing test fair on Zoom, so we may exceed that 30 minutes, but we will see how far we get. So the first two I have is Sandra Nelson and Roger Law.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and commissioners. I'm Sandra Nelson, a resident of Washington County for 40 years. Regarding the security of our registration system, I'd like to bring to your attention this updated permanent administrative order issued by the outgoing Secretary of State dated October 23, 2024. You have a copy of it attached to the testimony that you just received. The order provides an updated list of all public agencies authorized to register voters. Included are Armed Forces Recruitment Offices operated by the U.S. Department of Defense and Oregon National Guard Recruitment Offices, Oregon Commission for the Blind, five agencies within the Oregon Department of Human Services, including Aging and People with Disabilities, Area Agency on Aging, Self-Sufficiency and Child Welfare, Office of Developmental Disability Services and Vocational Rehabilitation, four agencies within the Oregon Health Authority, including Contraceptive Care Program, Health Systems Division, Behavioral Health, Women, Infants and Children Nutrition Program, Oregon State Hospital, Oregon Department of Transportation, Driver and Motor Vehicle Services Division. But I understand that there's been a temporary hold on this agency because of the problems that have recently surfaced. Public universities as defined in ORS 352.002, Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs and Indian Health Service, Western Oregon Service Union, Unit, excuse me. While Section Four of the order identifies the county elections official as the official responsible for voter registration in any county, ORS 247.012, the statute dealing with the qualifications and registration of electors states that registration of a qualified person occurs when a legible person occurs when a legible, accurate, and complete registration card is received in the office of any county clerk, the office of the Secretary of State, and office of the Department of Transportation, a designated voter registration agency, those that were just listed above, at a location designated by a county clerk under subsection seven of this section. For A, except as provided in ORS 247.128, that's a section dealing with alteration of information on a registration card. If a registration card is legible, accurate, and contains at a minimum the registrant's name, residence address, date of birth, and signature, the county clerk shall register the person. And a link is given for that information. Please note that citizenship is not included in the list of minimum requirements. Also, the term registration card includes those completed electronically. We have seen DMV's recent admission that they registered 62,949 individuals of unknown citizenship status from January 1, 2021 through October 18, 2024. Looking at this updated list of agencies or organizations authorized to register people and noting that by statute, citizenship is not a requirement for registration, we can only conclude that we have thousands more non-citizens on our voter rolls. How many of those are in Washington County and how many voted in the last election? How many citizens had their votes canceled or diluted by the votes of unqualified voters? Clearly, the state has failed in its responsibility to maintain accurate voter rolls, and so has, unfortunately, our county. We ask you, Washington County Commissioners, to step up and do your duty to protect the rights of citizens by ensuring that only eligible voters are registered and voting in elections. There's still time to ensure that this occurs before the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. And in case it isn't obvious enough to all the folks who have signed up to testify, we've heard points made previously as Ms. Nelson has gone over once again. And your testimony is what is standing between us and are actually going into that work session presentation on election. So please, sir, start now.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I am Roger W. Law, a resident of Washington County for 42 years. One of the items that appears on today's election office agenda is mission machine counting versus hand counting of ballots. We suspect that the elections staff would prefer machine counting considering the hand counting process we have witnessed during the risk-limiting audits. Batches and races to be audited are designated by the Secretary of State. And here is a brief description of hand, of the hand counting process. Working with one batch at a time, the ballots are divided among counting teams. Each team sorts their pile of ballots by separating out all the ballots with positive votes for the race being audited. The teams count their votes, combine the counts, then compare to the machine count. To audit the next race, the team starts the process all over again. They combine all their ballots into one pile, then sort one, sort by separating out all the ballots with positive votes for the next race audited. Once again, the teams count their votes, combine the counts, then compare to the machine count. And so it continues for each batch and for each race until the numbers match the machine count. After each race, they have to combine their pile and start sorting it all over again. We have a method that is being used by other counties that is much more efficient, transparent, and easily auditable, and we would love to show you how it works. According to the TDMS research, the United States remains one of the few major democracies in the world that continue to allow computerized vote counting, not observable by the public, to determine the results of its elections. Countries such as Germany, Norway, the Netherlands, France, Canada, Denmark, Italy, the United Kingdom, Ireland, Spain, Portugal, Sweden, Finland, and most other countries protect their, the integrity and trust of their elections with publicly observable hand counting of paper ballots. And this does not include countries in Asia, Africa, or the Middle East, which also count ballots by hand. According to a 2020 Gallup World Poll, only 40% of Americans say they are confident in the honesty of U.S. elections. Finland and Norway, with 89% of their citizens expressing confidence, confidence in the honesty of their elections, along with citizens of 25 other countries, have greater confidence in their elections than do Americans. Many other states have begun moving in this direction as well, including Missouri, California, New Hampshire, Florida, Arkansas, Texas, and South Dakota. Many New England townships and counties not reflected in this list also count ballots by hand. We need to return to our roots. Counting ballots by machine is a recent phenomenon. We did just fine prior to technology, fine, we did just fine prior to technology and had some day, same-day results. With such fast, efficient machines, why is it taking us longer than ever to get our election results? We have no transparency or access to meaningful audits. The machines are hackable, expensive, and vulnerable to breakdowns such as we saw in the last election. Sometimes, technology is the problem, not the solution. Please refer to the document machine versus hand counting to see a comparison. And thank you for allowing me to, for the Holy Spirit to speak through me.
Next, we have Mary Chalkopoulos and Karen Schmidlin, followed by Jill Latre and Bob
Do you have anything new for us today?
Please go ahead. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. I'm Mary Chalkopoulos, a resident of Washington County for 23 years. A look at the election office agenda for today tells us that vote-by-mail security is a topic of discussion. As we've demonstrated on several occasions, there's no such thing as a secure vote-by-mail system. Realistically, once the ballots are out the door and in the mail, there's no way to track or protect them. They travel across great distances without oversight and are handled by many hands. No logical person could honestly say that is a secure system. As we shared at the last board meeting during the December 12th Oregon House Interim Rules Committee election debrief in Salem, the Coos County clerk reported that 2% of Coos County citizens did not receive delivery of their ballots from the U.S. Postal Service. The clerk was clear she wanted to see better tracking or chain of custody of the mailed ballots. In Washington County, we also heard citizen testimony to this body that people didn't receive their mailed ballots. We suspect this, that the reason for this extraordinarily long lines at the elections office during this election, that was the reason for it. Please ask the elections director today how many people in Washington County did not receive their mailed ballots. Despite the issues involved with the mailing of ballots, the Election Assistance Commission has identified specific chain-of-custody best practices designed to mitigate vote-by-mail process issues. They cover a wide range of topics, including registration and record-keeping. For instance, regarding registration, one item on the EAC checklist states voters are properly registered to vote. Given the recent revelations of noncitizen registration through Oregon DMV alone, plus the general lax registration requirements and self-attestation, can we honestly say that our elections meet that standard? I think not. Regarding record-keeping, EAC states mailed ballot accounting is an important element of a well-run election. Reconciling the number of ballots mailed with the number of requests received and keeping a daily accounting of the number of ballots received in person from a drop box or in the mail provides a record of the number of ballots in the possession of an election official at a given point in time. We can safely state that the accounting practices of the elections office leave much to be desired. In fact, when we asked staff if we could get a daily accounting of ballots received, we were denied. When we asked if extra ballots kept on hand were accounted for daily, we were told no, that that wasn't important. There was more concern around ballot envelopes than ballots. And there is no systematic process for dealing with disposition and tracking of spoiled or returned ballots. Through a public records request, we obtained the document you have before you showing returned ballots by receive date and drop site location. We have several questions regarding this document, and here are just a few. On page four, why are all 863 online votes submitted through the VoAT system all submitted on the same date, September 23, 2024? The elections office on Aleclac has an external drop box, an internal mailbox, and a drop box on the front desk. Yet we don't see any ballots listed as being collected at these locations. Were they counted? Where are all the ballots dropped off on election day? According to this document on page three, ballots were received at the counter only for three days, September 23, 24, and 27. Where are all the ballots that were dropped off at the counter over the course of the election season? Looking at only these brief examples of the issues around mailing, registration, and record-keeping under the current system, can't we finally agree once and for all that vote-by-mail security is a fantasy? And work together to implement a system that is transparent, accurate, and makes sense? We can no longer afford to trade convenience for honest elections. Let's work together to change the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Schmidlin.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Karen Schmidlin, and I've resided in Washington County for over 40 years in banks. For four years, I've served as an election observer and have provided observer, observer training to interested citizens. Today, the election office may address expanding observation of election processes. Please note that our ability to observe won't affect the veracity of the election process. It is our right and our duty to observe our elections, but observation alone will not solve the problems. At the October 1 Commissioners Meeting, Dan Forrester, the Elections Division Manager, noted that we have an observer room to watch all aspects of the election process. I later shared that the observer room is far removed from ballot processing, and observers are not able to watch all aspects of the process. In our past testimony to you and in an email to Mr. Forrester, we requested meaningful observation be provided for the November 2024 general election. The email to Mr. Forrester requested in-person, in the same room, observation in these areas: the receiving room, the warehouse, where ballots are received and scanned, the board's room, where ballots were, are tabulated, and the signature verification area. In-person observation of the retrievals, the retrieval, signature verification, duplication, and tabulation of Yuakava ballots, the retrieval of election results and updating to the state. The ability to submit meaningful, real-time challenges to processes or signatures has been done historically. All election processes, or excuse me, all election results reported to the state at any date and time first be posted publicly in the lobby at the county prior to being sent to the state. Also, since ballots are counted over the course of several days before, on, and after election day, we ask that ballot counts again be posted publicly in the lobby at the county at the beginning and at the end of each counting day, whether or not they're reported to the state on that day. Each of these requests were denied by the elections office. During the November 2024 general election, all observation again took place from the observer room on monitors with no in-person observation allowed. I will again share some of the ongoing issues. No visibility as to where and how election results are reported. No access to ballot duplication, the process where election workers duplicate the votes from unscannable ballots onto a regular ballot. Our election takes weeks, weeks and weeks to complete, making it difficult for observers to be present during all of the processes. It's impossible to follow the ballot process flow. The monitors are of very poor quality. Four of 13 camera views rotate at 45-second intervals. The security cameras used are not intended for close-up viewing. The cameras may project the same view. There are blind spots. Ballots often travel off-camera to unknown and unviewable locations, and no audio is projected. The signature verification process utilizes separate monitors where electronic ballot signatures are compared with those on file. Electronic signatures are of poor quality. Observers do not have access to all signatures on file, and election workers generally speed through the verification processes. Many signatures do not match, and observers are unable to challenge them. Adjudication is also observed on separate monitors. Observers do not have visual access to all ballots being adjudicated. With both signature verification and adjudication, the monitors are not always operational. The election workers utilize more workstations than what can be projected into the observation room. And therefore, thousands of signatures are accepted and hundreds of ballots are adjudicated without any witnesses. During the, and it's just not possible with the way that things are set up. It's just not possible. During the election, we requested in-person observation of an adjudication process with zero visibility that continued over a period of at least two days. We again were denied, but were informed by Mr. Forrester that after the election was certified, we could submit a public records request, which has a fee, to inspect the batches of ballots in question. We look forward to changes being made to provide meaningful observation of our elections, which is our right and duty. And we appreciate your time. And on the subject of time, the time is allowed for us to make these statements. That's in the schedule. And so it's, we're not standing between us, between getting to the next portion of this meeting. It's not us. There was a schedule. And the other things that were brought forth in this meeting took longer than probably was expected.
I'm sorry if that's the way it came across to you. I was trying to ensure that folks know that we'll get to that subject as soon as the comments are over, so that people had the opportunity to decide if they wanted to continue with comments or just get to the work session topic. That is all. Sorry.
I see. I understand. But yes, we do, we do have things to say.
Yes.
So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next two we have is Jill Latre and Bob Terry. And I'll note that we've saved two and a half minutes towards that 30 minutes.
And we have one person on Zoom as well. Thank you.
Clerk Moss, mine is, I was going to reiterate our questions, I'm sorry, I'm Jill Latre, reiterate the questions that we have today for the work sessions. So I will hold back, and we will speak to those at our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Latre. Mr. Terry.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, and Happy New Year to you. So, and welcome, welcome, Jason, to the happy committee, okay? And happy council. I have only a few statements to make, and I will make them quick. I won't use my whole five minutes, Madam Chair, so you'd appreciate that. I do have a couple of concerns. And one of them is that our, in our work, we have made several requests to you to show you a way of counting ballots and making a full presentation to you and requesting work sessions. This has continued to be ignored. And as a result today, we hear from you that you're concerned about us repeating things that we have said to you in the past. We fully understand that. We know to some degrees that we are. We see that as board recidivism. That's similar to being illegal because we are here as individuals. We are making individual presentations. We are not trying to redo something that we've already done, but making you aware of new aspects of what perhaps we have already said to you. And that's the idea of what we're trying to do to you. We are here as elected individuals. Every one of us has been elected to a position in our counties, in our districts, and we are here as citizens representing our individual feelings. As to the issues that were brought up this morning by one of our members, or one of the, one of the people we work with, there is a, and in some of these areas such as DMV and some of the, all the lists, the whole list of places where you can register to vote, our concern is lack of training. They are not trained to, the people there in those positions are not trained. I know DMV has discontinued doing that temporarily. But you know, one of the things that we see continually ignored or not reflected as being recognized is the safe and secure of our votes, primarily through the chain of custody. There is absolutely no way you can possibly secure yourself through the mail-in voting system. There is no chain of custody done as to the county, the number of ballots that are mailed out, where they go, and how they come back. I don't know how you do that. I'm not making any suggestions that there is a way of doing it. I'm just telling you it's not possible to do. And not only that, there has been several places across this country, and even in this state, where there has been, unfortunately, illegal male personnel, I'm sorry, U.S. male personnel, who has misappropriated, lost, held up, misplaced, whatever you want to call it, election envelopes. It's a known fact. That is part of chain of custody. Chain of custody is a federal law as well as a state law that it must be adhered to. Our state is completely ignoring it. You're going to hear more about this shortly, and we are preparing right now a 189-page that I'm working on and putting together and making so that will be given to your county council and to you as a board. I'm not going to make each of you copies of it. I want to charge you for it if I do, as you charge us for everything we buy. And so it's a 189-page document. I will give one to the clerk, and he can make copies for you all if he wishes. I will certainly give one to county council because it involves her, because it has to do with home rule. So I appreciate your time this morning, and I'm looking forward to seeing you in your next session, because we will be there, and we're going to be busy taking notes, and we appreciate that you're doing it. We are here only as constructive. We are not here to be criticizing you, anybody else, or the staff. We have found your staff very, very cooperative. We have infiltrated your staff on many levels and at many occasions, and a lot of what we're reporting to you is things that we see and observe. We are here as a friendly part of your citizenship of this county, and I just hope you take it that way. And I appreciate your time this morning, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be browbeating anybody, but I tell you, it gets to here when I hear that we are not doing our job as citizens, because we are. Thank you very much for your time, and good morning to you.
And for the record, the Board of Commissioners asked Ms. Angie to have her staff report back to us on the various comments and questions that we've been hearing over these months. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. We're glad to hear that, and we appreciate it.
Clerk Mas, who do we have next?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. That concludes his testimony in the room. We have Holly McCullough on line. Holly, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Okay. I hope it's okay, but I'm bringing a completely different issue unrelated to elections to you. So, good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Holly Wyberg-McCalla. I have lived in Washington County for about six years. I would be there in person, but unfortunately, my whole family has contracted this norovirus, so to stop the spread of that, we'll leave it to Zoom today. So I wanted to bring to your attention something that has concerned our neighborhood and quite a few citizens outside of that as well, about developments that are being proposed within riparian habitats, particularly the developments exceed what is in ordinance 902. So in gross ordinance number 902, amendments to the community development of Pacific and natural resources can challenge many of these developments' compliance with land use regulations concerning riparian habitats. According to this ordinance, which went into effect December 5, development within riparian corridor water areas and wetlands allows for one middle housing duplex on a law of record, provided there is insufficient suitable existing buildable land area to permit construction outside the riparian corridor. It's concerning to us that there is more than that being proposed, particularly, we in the Cooper Mountain area, and in the Cooper Mountain area, there is the North Ridge Natural Woods. This is an area near and dear to my heart. It's very spiritual and peaceful back there. It's home to many wildlife, owls, deer, salamanders, fish, you name it, it's back there. There are streams also that go into the Tuauton Valley River. So the designation of the area as riparian wildlife habitat implies protection under local or state environmental laws. I understand the need for middle housing, but I believe that it should be balanced with control of these natural resources. The site has an average slope of approximately 31%, which would create significant environmental and engineering challenges. Legal cases involving steep slopes like this have often resulted in restrictions to protect against erosion, water runoff, and soil instability. According to the World Resources Institute, erosion degrades land, which means it can support fewer plants that can take in climate-warming carbon dioxide. Soils themselves could potentially sequester enough greenhouse gases in the year to equal about 5% of all annual human-made greenhouse gas emissions. With Oregon being particularly environmentally conscious, our elected officials should be balancing the need for middle housing with adequate land management to help keep soil and riparian habitats intact, so they can grow more carbon-sucking vegetation. Like I said, the development falls within the Tuauton Valley watershed, meaning any development of steep terrain may have potential impact on water quality, flood risk, and habitat disruption. We're requesting access to all studies and engineering evaluations that have been performed or may be performed in the future. Again, we just want to make sure that developments proposed, like the ones in the Natural Woods area, are going to preserve these wildlife habitats and specifically the riparian habitats that are currently being protected. That is all. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much for letting me speak, especially over Zoom.
Thank you, and may you and your family recover quickly. And I assume, Clerk Mas, that you have her contact information?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Terrific. Great. Do we have anyone else?
We do not have anyone else. Would any other member on Zoom wish to probably public comment for up to five minutes? We have time just for one more, so look at raised hands. Not seeing any additional hands, Chair Harrington.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Mas. So, Board members, we have two options. We can reconvene at 12 o'clock and pick back up with our elections topic, and then after that topic, take an hour or so for lunch. Or we can choose to adjourn this meeting and take our lunch break, and then reconvene at a time certain, 1:00, to pick back up with our agenda topics from there.
I think I'm going to recommend, since we have a lot of members who are waiting to see our work session, that we proceed and then delay the lunch hour.
Yes, I understand, which is why I listed as one. So thank you for letting us know your preference. Other board members, what would you like?
I'd be willing to take a 15-minute break and then resume.
Well, we need to take a 10-minute break, certainly.
I'm good with a break and then resume.
Okay. So first, I need to make sure I read off the upcoming board schedule. Our next set of meetings will be Tuesday, January 28. We'll have a work session starting at 2:00. Then, in the evening, we'll start with a Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 6:30, and then the board meeting will follow after that. We're looking at the month of February already. Tuesday, February 4, we'll have a work session at 9:00. We'll pause that, have the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00, followed by the Commissioners Board of Directors meeting after that. On Friday, we will have a Clean Water Services Board of Directors Learning Day, starting at 9:00 a.m. And then the following Tuesday, we'll have a work session only, starting at 9:00. And on Thursday, February 13, we'll have the Board of County Commissioners Roundtable, starting at 9:00. On Tuesday, the 18th, we'll have work session at 9:00, board meeting, that'll be paused, then we'll have the board meeting at 10:00, and then reconvene and work session. On Thursday, February, excuse me, Tuesday, February 25, we will have a work session at 2:00 p.m. and then a board meeting at 6:30 p.m. Are there any other board announcements for today? Okay, seeing none, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Let's make it a little bit longer to round it up, and we will convene at 12:15. Yeah, 12:10. Thank you. For those of you who would like to stay here in the room, we've made accommodations, and do those still hold?